Good evening. Welcome to Tuesday, October 26, 2021 regular Selectmen's meeting. A Select Board meeting, excuse me. I'm gonna take a while to get that down and also instead of BCTV, BCM.
ECM, yep.
Yep. Yeah, all of the Selectmen are here except for Mark Tendigas, who called in just a little while ago, said he was not gonna be making it. We have our Town Manager, our Town Clerk, and Chair of the Envision Committee with us. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
A flagellations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on with any more business, I want to take a moment. And we learned of the passing of Eleanor Murphy this past week. Eleanor was very well-known in town, and she was a real fixture. For people that didn't know her very well, she grew up in town. She was a selectman, she served on the school board. She was in the state legislature for 20 years or more. She was not afraid to tell people what she thought, and she thought a lot. She was, I guess you could say she was my nemesis and also my mentor. When I first ran for for the House of Representatives, because Eleanor was term limited out, and so there was an open seat. And after I won, she told me, she said, "Tom, it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or a Republican, the people of Burwick are who you work for. That's all that matters." And she was true to that word. We could be on different issues, on many different issues, different sides of it. And in the end, it was always what was best for the people of Burwick. When Mark and I got elected eight years ago now, was it? Seven and a half years ago, back to the Board? She came down and made sure that we did our job, and we did it the way she thought we should do it, because it was the right way. You know, she had all that experience, so. We're gonna really miss Eleanor. I believe the wake for her is this Thursday at the Biba Home on Cemetery Road. If you all just take a few minutes with me, you'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. First order is the approval of the meeting minutes from October 12.
I make a motion that we approve.
Yep, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Lynda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Thank you. First public comment, we have no public comment coming. Nobody called in. We have a public hearing approval for the November 2nd, 2021 Town Referendum election. I'll open that up. We have, everything has been in place, we have nothing else to add to it. There has been no public comment that I know of. I don't believe we need to read through it again. If there is no more, no public comment, I will close the public hearing. That brings us to reports of committees. We have Jeremy Caston here with our Envision Burwick Committee. Welcome, Jeremy.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Not a lot to report that's big changes yet, although next Tuesday, following the election, or voting, I should say, we are having a lawn chairs meeting over Zoom. Or I suppose if anybody wanted to go in person, James, you probably already be... James there?
I'm here.
Yeah, so you may already be at Town Hall. So we will open it up for people if they want to do the conference room. We could talk about that. But starting to think about really pushing for lawn chairs for next summer. So that's some of the excitement. We also are starting to look for sponsors for the Burwick Quarterly. We got our first sponsor for the winter edition. That'll cover December, January, February. So Tenner Hergut, who has the, two of the storage facilities, and some exciting news about a new business he's bringing to Burwick, which we'll be announcing in the Quarterly. He is the sponsor for the winter edition. We're thrilled about that. And anybody who's panicking about not getting Christmas gifts in time from those container ships. We are printing a giant list of Burwick makers. So "Made in Burwick" products. And you'll be, I think, pretty amazed how much great stuff is getting made right here in this town that you can do all your shopping here, which I think is awesome. And that's kind of the broad, general stuff. We've got a bunch of other important things going on, including the Dig a Hole Committee, which is making great headway. And at the moment, is waiting on their final report that you guys approved. So I think, James, you sent a draft of that this week, is that right? That was the first draft?
Yeah, first draft of the playbook, which covers the 16 project we've identified, brief narrative and funding sources. And we actually met with Greatfell's Construction today for about two and a half hours. And I started at 10:30, and before I knew it, it was 1:30. And we talked... I know more about underground infrastructure than what I bargained for this morning, but it was a good thorough overview of that. We talked a little bit about drainage and some of the other stuff that I'll get into in my Town Manager Report. So that's on a really good track. And we're in line to set out for those goals of aligning us for grant opportunities and phasing the projects along with the development horizon, so it's good.
That's the broad, broad sweeping news from Envision at the moment. We're forging ahead on a bunch of other things. I'm trying to find a way to see if we can't get the swap shop reopened, maybe on a partial basis. So many people have been vocal about wanting to get that back. And so we're trying to work that out. And we've, James introduced me to this woman, Jessica, who works at Noble and is possibly able to furnish us with high school volunteers that would be able to man the swap shop on Tuesdays. So that's an option we're looking at. I've talked to Jody, waiting to set up a meeting with Robert and Jody and James. So that'd be a nice, you know, low-hanging fruit project to, you know, keep the good vibes flowing. And that's all from Envision for tonight.
Any questions for Jeremy? No, if not, thank you, Jeremy.
Well, here are some questions.
No questions. Hey, have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody.
We have no department reports, no appointments. The unfinished business is the contract for Steve Eldridge, who consult with James. Maybe, James, you could give us a brief update of how often you've talked to Steve?
Yeah, right now, we got a pretty good routine going of we talk every other week via Zoom for about an hour, just to go over... Love to keep them in the loop with things, but it's good for me just to make sure I'm on the right track. And hey, this is what I did, just kind of checking my work and giving me feedback. You know, I always leave with a list of things where he's, he said, "Oh, you should do this. Make sure you do that." So it's been really nice to keep up to date with him and kind of go over the gamut of what we're doing, and he helps.
Yeah, I think he's gonna be a great resource, especially for, you know, especially the first six, nine months. He's a really great resource.
Linda, you've had concerns about that six-month cutoff, you know? You want to address your concerns? Tell us exactly. You know, you've been concerned about, you know, who decides when it ends?
Oh, that part, no, just as far as my concerns with Steve, I just thought the contract should be public and we vote on it. But as far as the end of his six-month probationary period, my question was, is that something that we decide at a meeting? Or what is the process for that? That's all.
We never really discussed that.
Right.
I kind of assumed that, you know, after a few months, the need for James to be using that would just peter off anyway. So in six months, we should be done with, pretty close done to the budget. So that's a big part of it there.
So that might just be a meeting with him and us during an executive session to sign off on the probationary period?
I don't even know if it need to be in an executive session.
Well, I'm very much open to doing it in public if you so chooses.
It's a public contract, you know? I think the daily fee is $450, is it?
$450 for a full day.
You're talking about with Steve, so I'm talking about two different things. So I'm talking about his just overall six-month probationary period we put into James's contract. And then the contract with Steve is for six months as well. I think that's just a discussion with James, whether or not, you know, we can look at it, have a conversation with him. Where do you think you're at, where do you not at? Do you want us to extend it or don't you? Do you find it useful? And do we file, if he's gonna clear his six-month probation, which I have no reason to doubt you won't. But then, then we can do that. But I just think that we should have a process in place to establish that. I mean, I think Steve will always be a mentor to you, to be quite honest with you.
He's probably watching right now.
He probably is.
I talked to him last week, and he has been following what we've been doing. So if he knows what's going on. How about Mike and Noah? You have any concerns, any comments of any kind?
I have no concerns about the contract. I mean, I think what James is currently doing is exactly what we wanted, which is just, you know, checking in to make sure all the bases are covered, that all the little things that he wouldn't know about or he's being informed of. You know, just like, just being there to be like a sounding board of experience, which is what we really need him to be. And I think that the six months will cover most all situations. And like you said, I mean, I'm sure he'll be available if there's, you know, sudden, not emergencies, but a sudden, sudden need arises for experience, I'm sure he'll be available for, you know, a couple hours in the future. You know, after, if the contract expires or if we feel the need to extend it. So I'm comfortable with where things are at.
Yeah, I mean, same by me. I mean, I don't, I don't have anything other than a second, you know, Linda and Noah. And like you said, Tom, I think Steve's very vested in this town, even into his retirement. So I don't think we'll have any issues if we ever needed to, you know, or James ever had an issue to reach out to him. But yeah, I think Linda is concerned, if I'm correct, is just making sure that it was discussed and it was out in the open so everybody knew what was going on or what that option was for the public so they can see what's there.
Right. Let's just make it public, and that way, no one can accuse later of it not being public. But I don't have any problem per se with the contract at all.
Yeah, and as far as the six months, both for Steve and James, is the James review we will do in executive session.
Okay, that's what I, I was getting confused with the two crossing over, but...
I have a feeling if we're not happy with James, the public might know it before then, but...
Yeah, and I don't anticipate, I'm just saying the contract with Steve should just be public because it's part of...
That's no problem. And basically, is, you know, you've seen the contract, it's very minimal, very straightforward. So Steve's only come down one day, right?
One day.
And as far as your bi-weekly chats there, has he charged us yet?
I think the last one went over an hour, but I think most of them will be arranged around a half hour to 45 minutes.
All right.
Which the contract says anything, the billing starts at an hour, over an hour.
Yeah, so you could just hang up with him and tell him to call you back in five minutes? Or is it start a new hour?
Yeah, instead of talking, you email them.
59 minutes, bye.
And I actually think that's a good thing to point out too, and I thought about it after, is just for everybody to know, like, that first hour, that's just Steve being Steve with James, and James asking questions. That's not even anything that the town's paying for, that's even part of that, so. You know, and I'm sure a lot of those conversations are quick, quick check-ins, it seems like.
I don't have any issue with like the rate or that. I just think it should be publicly approved.
Moving on to Town Manager's Report.
Okay, so I got some updated transportation fees. The last time they were addressed, February 2012. I will email that to the entire Board. I have some paper copies here. It shows the biggest change, there's a half-load for pickup truck. Goes from $7 to $20, and a full-size from 12 to 40. That's the biggest change. The other change are pretty nominal or kind of marginal changes to reflect the actual cost of trash disposal. So this will be back on the agenda for November 9th, and I'll make sure that that's emailed, and you have plenty of time for review. And I'll ask, I'll check with Jody, I've talked with him a few times about it. He's been evaluating what the regional transport stations around us, our neighbors, are doing. So this is bringing them in line with what North Burwick, South Burick are doing.
And I'd just like to point out that, you know, is the town gets charged by the ton. So this is actually, you know, making sure that the people that are disposing of things are paying, you know, their share of this. We don't want, you know, people that don't use the dump to be subsidizing them. So this is, you know, just a more of a user fee, I would say, than anything else.
And this is all specific to these categories. This doesn't really affect any just normal trash somebody brings in there.
The household trash and recyclables.
Everything's costing more.
There'll be more on that next meeting. The next one I have, this came across my desk today, and I'll try to explain this, because it's actually, it's pretty simple. Maine PERS, it's our retirement benefit. They recently, Main State changed the law where they're allowing employees who did not choose to opt into the program. When you first join with the town, you have an option either to join or not join. And you have one, it's either you're in or you're out from the first day. And then you're not allowed to join. But they recently changed their law to allow folks who opted not to join to join. So the motion for tonight would be to allow myself to sign an amendment agreement between any employer that would like to join the Maine Public Employees Retirement System, Maine PERS. Are there any questions on that?
No, I know it.
Most, I think most employees who are eligible are in it, and the folks that don't want to be in it are, you know, they're pretty strong with not being one, wanting to be in it. So this may open an opportunity for one employee, but I think it's a good opportunity to offer a nice benefit for employees. So the motion is to adopt the revisions of 5 MRS subsection 1825-C.
Any other questions of Jay? Actually, we need a motion in a second before we should discuss this, but...
I make, I'm aware of it. I'll make a motion that we approve. James's motion referenced regarding the law change from Maine PERS.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, further discussion. So what happens, James, now with employees that don't join the PERS? How is that, how are their retirement, their pension handled?
It should also be noted that anyone who joins, like, if you choose not to join Maine PERS, you don't have to join Maine PERS unless there's an ordinance in your municipality, which I don't know if the town is, but... So if somebody, one key point is if somebody is given the opportunity now and joins it, they have to do it post-tax, where before it's pre-tax. So that is a distinct difference in the new law. So if you had an opportunity six years and you signed, and you said, "No, I'm not interested", and so you didn't contribute, but now you want to take advantage of this and enroll, it starts from the day you enrolled. You don't get the six years back. And you're coming up post-tax as a toast to pre-tax. So there is a difference for the employee. It just opens up the opportunity for them to, maybe they, maybe they became an employee and weren't sure if they were gonna stay long-term or not. And now they've decided they are going to. Here's an opportunity for them to enroll in the retirement system.
Do I have this right? I might be talking out of turn, but I think for those who aren't in the Maine PERS, they just have just traditional, just normal...
Right, if you're already in Maine PERS, nothing changes for you. And you're still pre-tax, and that's, and if you're a new employee, you would still be offered the same pre-tax opportunity. This is, the law changes only to allow anybody who before did, you know, chose not to, it's another opportunity to jump on board, but it is post-tax.
I have no problem with it, you know? We try to support our employees every way we can.
I mean, I think one of the underutilized things is people investing in their retirement. And I think any way to open up another outlet for them that's there. And like Linda said, how many people think they're just taking a job and don't want to get in? And all of a sudden find themselves six, 12, 18 months down the road going, "Oh, look, I can make a career out of this, and I missed an opportunity." So no, I think this is actually a good change in the law.
Yep. And the same thing too is, I think I agree with James. Most people who are interested in Maine PERS and the pension plan probably enrolled right from the beginning. So it's not going to affect a high number of employees. And it's not going to change the rate that the municipality has to pay. You know, so there's no change there.
All right. Without any further discussion, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
He's on mute.
Noah's on leave right now. Is Linda?
Yes.
Is Mike?
Yes.
Myself is yes, and Noah is abstaining as of this moment. All right, anything else?
I got a few more things.
James has got a list.
An idea that Tom had based off of some discussions where we're trying to identify office space needs within the Town Hall. Different products going on, different product needs. I think a great idea would be to form a Town Hall Building Committee. We can include a Select Board member, Envision Burwick member, Legion, Town Hall staff, come together and look at what the needs are for the Town Hall. I mean, I think we need new windows, we need an elevator, we need...
Restrooms.
Bath, yes.
Bathrooms, yeah.
That's one of my top...
I think restrooms is probably our next biggest one.
I think restrooms and ADA compliance with an elevator, yeah.
Yeah, ADA compliance. And whether we do a full elevator or look at actually getting a lift that works 100% of the time. Ramps, things like that. So I'll be in touch to gauge interest in who wants to be part of that.
I would, if no one else is interested, I would be interested too.
When I floated the idea to James, I said that it'd be a good idea for a selectman on it, and I'd volunteer somebody else to do it. I'm glad you volunteered without me.
So that'll be, that'll be a fun project.
Yeah.
And like, you know, just to expand on that a little bit, you know, the way things have been changing around here is we're talking about major changes with the Rec Department and doing different things. It just makes sense to, you know, instead of doing things piecemeal from now on, to look at it and get a real plan about where we're going, what we need to do, and best utilizing the space.
I think it's a great idea, a great idea. Next topic, we hired a planner today, or we had someone accept the position.
Nice.
Toughest decision I ever had to make in my Town Manager career.
Six weeks of it? Seven weeks of it?
We had seven applicants, and we actually interviewed all seven. Myself and Jen and Patty. It was a fantastic experience, and I was super impressed and encouraged by the talent that came through and the conversations we had. So we hired Tammy Bellman, and she comes with many years of municipal experience. She's been an admin assistant to both Select Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board. She was at Alfred and Waterboro. So I'm sure she's worn a thousand different hats, you know, in a small community. So she'll fit right in. She's worked with our contract planner from SNPDC for a couple years already. She has experience working with them. So she'd be able to come, be able to come right in and to pick up the ball for planning. So she starts in a couple weeks, and I can't, I can't wait for that to start.
Good.
A note on Memorial Field Expansion, the Carmiers. They've agreed to the site plan that several consultants had designed for three acres. This we paid by impact fees. And I don't know, would this be the time where the Board votes to authorize negotiating? Or should I come back with kind of...
Typically, you'd come back with a finished product. And what's to look at? And then we can, you know, look at it and say, you know, yes or no, and sign off it all in one shot.
Okay, I'll get it, I'll get that teed up as soon as possible. And then lastly, 12 Sullivan Street, AKA the L-shaped building, AKA the building with the mirrors on it, that is starting in mid-November. They have several tenants that are interested in the building. And they have a handful of tenants that already signed on to go in that building.
Very good. I noticed they put up a poll for their temporary construction power the other day. So I was very encouraged to see that.
I was wondering what that was.
Yeah, yeah, it's a poll for their temporary power so they can run...
Electricity, yeah.
I guess their plan is to, they're gonna take all the brick, all the concrete block down, and they're gonna replace the walls as they go.
Even better, better than I expected.
So it'll be a whole new outside.
Whole new sheathing of the exterior. Oh, that's crazy. Because I was afraid they're gonna try to save some of that block and...
I think by the time they put the doors and the windows and everything...
Everything's out anyway, so. Very good. Any questions for James? If not, we'll move on.
Well, what is their anticipated timeframe with that? If they're gonna start in November?
I think they, I mean, I know they want to have tenants in there as soon as possible.
If they're starting in November, is come springtime, they should be able to be, start moving... Because they're gonna be doing a lot of the work themselves, I'm sure, but they also have all their contracts...
So they can potentially see people in there by summer?
Yeah.
Wow, that would be great, yeah.
And then they'll roll right into phase... They have, the project, they have phased, they have conceptualized about six different phases. And they're looking at doing Phases 1, 2, and 3 as, or at least starting Phases 1, 2, and 3 on the whole site, which is kind of the school street side. They're gonna get that side going. So they go right into that site work.
That would be nice.
That's great. All right, thank you, James. We have nothing under Selectment Communications. Bring us to our account payable. We have payroll warrant number 23 for October 21st, 2021. Amount of $68,956.06. We have an account payable warrant number 25 for October 26th, 2021. The amount of... And we have a payroll warrant number 24 for October 28th, 2021, for the amount of $69,780.58. I'll make a motion, we pay our bills.
Second it.
There's a motion and a second. Without further discussion, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right. Patty handed me a whole packet of different papers here. Um, municipal valuation data. Let's see. Municipal valuation return.
Tom, you might want to use your notebook, your, um, binder and not the yellow folder, because those aren't in any particular order. But the binder is.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
New business, number 14.
Yep.
So the municipal valuation return is submitted by the assessor to the Main Revenue Service Property Tax Division. Um, now, should Karen be involved in this? There's Karen now.
Hi there.
Hi there. As soon as I saw her assessor, I started looking for you.
Here I am.
All right. Can you explain some of this to us?
Sure. Uh, this is an annual report, uh, that is submitted to Main Revenue Services. Um, it's, the, it's, uh, the MVR lists, uh, the total assessments of local property, uh, collection of taxes, including land, building, personal property values, um, in addition to the value of each property classification. It's, uh, 10 pages of a lot of information about the town for the tax commitment that just occurred um, in, in August. So the MVR provides a record of all the exemption categories and current use programs that are in effect in Boroughs. Um, it also provides an overview of municipal tax records that are kept on file in the assessing office. Um, additionally, the completed MVR is used to determine the tree growth, homestead, and bedding reimbursements. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that on page one of the MVR, uh, the information there is provided to the state for the town's homestead exemption reimbursement claim. Um, the total exempt value for all homestead exemptions granted uh, includes a additional $2,600 that was omitted from the tax commitment um, committed and corrected with an abatement, um, on nine, on September 14th. So I added that amount to the, um, reimbursement value so that the town will receive full reimbursement for all homestead exemptions granted. The MVR must be signed, um, by the assessor, uh, of the municipalities and received by Main Revenue Services no later than Monday, uh, November 1st. So we're coming right up on that, um, that deadline. So hopefully we'll get that signed today and, uh,
Excuse me. Excuse me there. Is, um, all right, um, so it's just basically the, all the exemptions and what categories they are and everything. Is there any questions for Karen? If not, I'll accept the motion to, uh, accept the municipal valuation return for 2021?
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second?
I'll, I'll second it, but I have a question.
All right. Any questions?
Um, and just curiosity, James, you might know this. Um, on page three, it says open space, 553.04. Is that the same as what we heard from, um, Maspecto from the planning? I thought it was different.
It, it, what she was calling open space is different from what we consider open space.
Okay.
So, yeah, there is a difference.
Okay.
I think this would be, this is specifically the, the current use program, where there's open space, farmland, and tree growth.
Got it, okay.
Where there's, there's open, there's open space from like subdivisions that, that are just, the value's zero because it's, it can never be developed, it's, it's, it's conserved in perpetuity. These can be taken out of that program for a penalty.
Got it, okay. All right. I'm good.
Any further questions? If not, I'll go through the roll. Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, that brings us to our amended tax commitment. All right, so this is an affidavit to correct the government record. And this is what you referenced before? Karen?
It's in addition to, it's another, it's one more correction, uh, to the commitment. We did the homestead, uh, reimbursement commit, uh, correction with the abatement. And in this case here, um, we discovered that after the taxes were committed but before tax bills were printed, uh, one fully exempted homestead exemption was $200 more than what it should have been. And one homestead exemption that, that committed at fully exempt value, um, should have been at $25,000, and that's the one that we abated. The abatement corrects the commitment for the homestead exemption era, however, because the $200 correction for the fully exempt homestead exemption occurred after commitment, the commitment warrants must be corrected to reflect what was actually committed. And that's what we're doing here tonight, so we have the tax warrants to sign, um, just as you did at the time of commitment, um, to reflect this correction. Um, so the affidavit is, must be completed and kept with the commitment book, and I prepared those documents for your review and approval signatures.
Got it.
All right. We have a motion to accept the affidavit to correct the government record for the tax commitment?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the recommendation to amend the affidavit to correct the government record.
I'll second.
What was that, Karen?
I was just gonna say that, uh, we're correcting the affidavit and also, um, um, accepting the tax warrants, the certificate warrants for commitment.
I amend my motion to add, to accept the warrant, tax warrant.
All right, we have a motion.
Linda, you didn't want to say that all over again?
No, just nod.
I was, I was still second. Sorry, I was, I had to look up the right thing digitally to make sure I had, I was reading the right one, so.
All right, um, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. All right, next we have a, the town clerk requests to close customer service for the November, November 2nd election. And this is what we do every year now, is, uh, so many of our clerks they've used in the elections, that it's easier for Patty and everybody else just to close the office.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the customer service for, for the November 2nd election.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
Tom, I do have a question, though. Um, Patty, do we post that like on the website that it's gonna be closed ahead of time?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we post it.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the door too, and, you know, we encourage people to come in and come upstairs instead.
Okay.
And it'll be on the television and run on the, on the Facebook pages and everything, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. So we have no quick claim deeds, but we do have abatements and supplements, and Karen's back up again.
Hi, here I am. All right, we have a few abatements tonight. Um, the first one is, um, for personal property, uh, this Great America Financial Corporation filed an abatement. Um, they brought to our attention that, um, the depreciation for this particular coffee urn was depreciated at .85 when it should have been, uh, depreciated at .80, resulting in an assessed value that is $320 greater than what it should have been. So as a result, it's recommended that the total assessed value be reduced by $320 from $14,046 to $13,654, and an abatement be granted in the amount of $7.17. Um, these, there's the abatement form and calculation details that follow the memo. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Karen? If not, looking for a motion?
Move that we approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Next, Karen?
Next one is an abatement, um, that was, uh, that is regarding a, uh, property, um, it's a parcel on Little River Road that includes, um, several, uh, outbuildings and horse stables and, um, oh, now buildings. Uh, due to a data entry error, the new owner as of March 31st, 2021, was not entered in the assessing database, resulting in the wrong owner being assessed for the fiscal year 2122, uh, for the assessed value of $544,600. As a result, it's recommended that the abatement be granted in the amount of $9,966.18. And again, I have the abatement form that follows. Any questions?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the abatement request for 85 Little River Road.
Uh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. And next, Karen?
Okay, this next, um, uh, abatement request is, um, uh, a little bit different than, uh, the previous abatements, where this request is coming from a property owner, um, for the past two years, for fiscal year 2019, 20, and 2021. Um, and it's being, uh, brought to you not as the assessor, but as the, uh, municipal officers um, of the town. So as the municipal officers, you may grant an abatement that you may feel, um, uh, to correct, um, you know, an era, or illegality, or irregularity in the assessment. And that's according to the, uh, the state laws. So just a little background about this property. Uh, the subject is a vacant 5.4 acre parcel on Riddlin Road. Um, the property owner called the assessing office, um, this spring to inform us that the higher assessment for the past two years, meaning fiscal year 2019, 20, and 2021. Um, the, we researched the property, and it was determined that during the revaluation in 2019, it was thought that this parcel could be built upon. However, it cannot without improvements to the road or to the bridge. The cost of such improvements are so great that the building on this lot, the building on this lot is not feasible. So as a result, the parcel should have been assessed like other parcels that have the potential to be built upon if certain site or road improvements are completed. So when we learned about this in this spring, we corrected the, um, assessment by reducing, uh, by reducing it by $41,100 from $74,300 to $33,200 for the fiscal year 2122. So again, we, we made that correction as we, as we did, um, for this year. When the new assessed values were mailed to all property owners in July, um, as part of the revaluation in 2019, the owner did not schedule or attend a hearing to discuss the assessment. And with regards to the, uh, fiscal year 2019, 20, and the 2021, uh, assessments, the property owner, uh, failed to notify assessing in writing of the inequitable assessment within 185 days from the date of commitment, which is required, um, by the state law. So property owners have that timeframe to file, and, uh, they did not do so. So the assessor cannot, uh, abate because the deadline to file an abatement for both years has passed. Um, but it is, and it is more than one year from the date of commitment for the assessors to act on their own initiative. So on September 23rd, uh, the assessing office received from the property owner a written request to the municipal officers to grant an abatement for the fiscal years 2019, 20, and 2021. Which is within the acceptable three years from the date of commitment time period for the municipal office to make such reasonable abatement as they consider proper to correct any illegality, error, or irregularity in the assessment. That's, uh, I cite the law pursuant, uh, Title 36, Section 841, Paragraph 1. So for fiscal year 2019, 20, if the parcel were assessed like other similar properties, the assessed value would have been reduced by $41,100 from $74,300 to $33,200, and the taxes would have been reduced by $720.48. And that is the, uh, my abatement amount that is being requested by the owners. And for the second year, the fiscal year 2021, if the parcel were assessed like other similar properties, the assessed value would have been reduced by $41,100 from $74,300 to $33,200, and the taxes would have been reduced by $795.70. And again, that's the abatement amount requested. The property owner did also file, um, their own written, um, letter to you as the municipal officers, and that's in your packet, um, explaining their, um, sort of their side of, of their, of their request. And that, uh, summarizes much of what I, uh, did is, that I explained. Are there any questions?
So, yeah, I have a question. So if I'm understanding this as correctly, is the time has expired. They had an opportunity two years in a row to question this and failed to do so. And now they want us to go back?
That is correct.
And devalue the property and what are our obligations? Can you explain that last part? You said that they're within the three-year.
Yeah, so you do have the opportunity, and it's, it's, the key word is to, it's, uh, to make, you can make such reasonable abatements um, as you feel, you know, as, as, uh, from the date of commitment. Uh, you can make this abatement. However, you would be, might, you may be setting a precedent for property owners to continually come year after the time period. So that, um, in the past, um, this, that was just, that was not typically accepted by the municipal officers to set a precedent for, uh, property owners to, to request back, um, abatements that is beyond the 185 days or the one year from the date of commitment. So they had their opportunity to file, um, but they're pleading their case to you as the municipal officers.
And they didn't give any other reason other than this letter as to why they didn't appeal the first year or the second year, when they had the opportunity?
Right, that is, that is correct.
I can't hear.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Karen, is it safe to assume that they were notified of, of the taxing changes, right? Like, they paid their tax bill in 2019 and 2020?
That's correct.
Yeah, 'cause I'm reading their letter now, and I mean, I mean, I, I feel like it's on them. I mean.
I, I'm kind of in the same situation, because if notification was sent and they had an opportunity for a meeting, I remember getting it in mind, "If you have any questions, or you want to have a, a, a hearing, you're welcome to attend." Um, when the new assessments came out. There were several set up here at the town hall, correct?
Can I, can I interrupt this for a minute? Um, is, I see, I see on the television screen, we have somebody there with a black thing that just says Paul. Is that? Is that Paul trying to get in? Is that the Paul that's trying to, no, we have Paul Adams as a trustee?
Okay, yeah, he, I did make him aware of tonight's meeting and, and, uh, let him know that he could participate in the meeting if he so chose.
Is, uh-
Does he have something he wants to say?
There's a, there's a blank up there with Paul and an X, but there's no face, so is, I'm assuming Paul checked in and has checked out, maybe. Um, I'll, I'll give a little bit of history, as, as Karen said, is, we tend not to allow these because, once we start doing this, anybody can come in and go back for two years and contest their assessment.
Yeah.
And that's gonna just keep bringing them back to us and bringing them back to us, and, you know, it's very clear that they, they knew about the assessment, they paid their taxes as it was, so, um, I, 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 I don't feel as if, you know, the town should, you know, change our policy, which has been all along to, to not do this, so.
No, and, and I'm in agreeance, and, and I think that's, I think that puts really a slippery slope, and it's not that this is forgotten land or something's been out there and they've missed payments, they've clearly received notification and have paid it as this is what's, what's going on. So, I, I think we're outside that scope unfortunately, not that I, you know, wanna tell somebody, no, not it, but-
In previous, pretty, previous issues, you know, it's on the landowner to make sure that everything's correct, and that, you know, I mean, mistakes will happen, but it's on the landowner to make sure that they are correct in the end, and if they discover after years it's been wrong, that's not on the town to, to, to deal with, that's for, for them to deal with, and it's, it's unfortunate, but it's the precedent that we have to set or we're gonna be dealing with this for every piece of property for decades.
Yeah, I mean, they had an opportu, they had a, a year's window after each assessment to appeal, and they paid their taxes so they knew what the new rate was. I, I agree, I don't, I don't see to do this.
All right, um, and, and just, just as, uh, a little bit of history is, I, I have a friend who lives in Burwick here, and after, oh, 20 or so years, he discovered that he had been paying the property taxes for a barn next to his property, and, you know, again, it was on him, he, for more than 20 years, he'd been paying that property tax, he should have been checking it, but, so, um, so, is, I will, looking for a motion? So, either accept or deny.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Uh, yes to denying the request.
And I, myself is a yes. All right. One more, Karen?
Yep, we have one more, and this is, um, a supplement. So earlier, um, I brought to you the abatement, uh, for the property at 85 Little River Road, uh, this is now the supplement, um, that corresponds to it. The subject, uh, again, is a, was a parcel, uh, with several outbuildings, um, on it, and due to a data entry error, the new owner as of March 31st, 2021, was not entered into the assessing database, resulting in the wrong owner being assessed for the fiscal year, uh, in the amount of $544,600. The owner of 85 Little River Road as of April 1st, 2021, is Ludbrook Family Farms LLC, per deed book 18621, page 782, as recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds. Therefore, it is recommended that a supplemental tax for the fiscal year 2122 be issued to Ludbrook Family Farms LLC in the amount of $9,966.18. Any questions?
Sounds like an error.
I'll make the motion to accept the supplement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I will go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Yep, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, um, second public comment, is, uh, we have no comment, we do have an executive session, is, um, is, uh, the consultation with the code enforcement officer, but before we get into that, is, uh, does anybody else have anything to bring up, any other business and non-agenda items?
This is our last meeting before the, uh, election that we're having in like a week, so, you know, go out and vote, please don't complain that nobody told you there was an election, please don't complain that you didn't get enough notice, we've been talking about it for five months, please go out and vote, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, good point.
Anything else? All right, we'll be going into executive session, we will not be taking any definitive action, we will not be voting on anything, um, so, is, uh, when we come back, we will, uh, be finished. So, under Title 1, subsection 405, 68, under consultation with a code enforcement officer, I will make a motion that we enter executive session.
Second.
We have a second, I'll go through the roll. Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, give us a few minutes to, uh, shut all the things down and get things going, and, uh, we'll be right back.